Director of Administration and also Ms. Tiffany Stevens, Director, Deputy Director of Human Resources. If you'd like to go ahead and start.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll go ahead and we'll get Tiffany up and rolling.
All right. Good evening, Council President and Council Members. My name is Tiffany Stevens, Deputy Director of HR, and tonight I'm bringing forth Bill twenty dash zero one zero, the Paying Classification Plan, in which the County Executive is proposing zero changes. So we have no changes for the Paying Class Plan. The County Executive did propose a $2,000 merit and a 2% COLA, which I am bringing to you due to the charter. However, the Paying Class Plan has no changes.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Council, at this time, it's your time for any questions? All right, seeing none, excuse me, Mr. Wagner.
If I could, I've been looking back through the older Paying Classification Plans, trying to figure out the differences. And this one's a little bit more unique in the fact that you're identifying this as to repeal and enact a new Hartford County Pay Plan, as opposed to some in the history behind us that says amended, as amended, and to enact the new classification plan and salary grade schedule to stand in lieu of. I'm just curious, because there was no brackets or anything here, this new one twenty dash zero one zero is exactly like what was the previous year's, is that correct?
Correct.
No changes whatsoever?
No changes.
Okay, and then what we have at the employees over the max with the FY twenty-one merit increase, that merit increase was supposed to be equivalent to $2,000, is that right? Or is it different with each individual?
No, the merit was $2,000 for those who were able and received the merit.
Okay, so what we got late today was a sheet that showed some that are different than just $2,000 merit increases.
Mr. Wagner, what I sent over to you today, just so that you would have, I wanted you to know, we highlighted on the last page of the legislation, the grades that were affected by six employees who, due to longevity, you know, went over the max. We, the county, really did not want to increase the max, but did not want to penalize employees that had been with us thirty-some years, most of them, that, you know, law department was comfortable with us just noting that, and I wanted for your benefit to see how many employees and where they were located, that that did affect, so.
I appreciate that. It was just a little bit misleading with that merit increase, assuming that it was $2,000, when it really doesn't reflect that, so I appreciate you sending it over, so we have that in hand tonight. Thank you.
And, Mr. Wagner, there really hasn't been any changes in the Paying Plan, because, quite frankly, with the pandemic going on and everything, we've been comfortable with it. We are, HR is going through the process of looking at all of our classifications and looking at the job descriptions and making sure that everything's in line with the duties of the employees. So possibly in the future, we will be bringing some changes.
Did anything address, did anything address the judicial service employees, the State's Attorney employees, and Hartford County Sheriff's Office in this one, or is that not in this?
No, this is just for our employees.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up, Mr. President.
Well, thank you. With no one else signed up, this will conclude the public hearing on Bill twenty dash zero one zero, and the public hearing is now closed. Moving on to Bill twenty dash zero one one, zoning and parking. Again, Mr. Boniface and Mr. Killian for planning and zoning.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So we do have the Director with us tonight, and he's going to go through the highlights of the bill before you answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Council President and members of council. My name is Brad Killian. I'm the Director of the Department of Planning and Zoning for Hartford County. Bill twenty dash zero one one is fairly simple and straightforward. There are two primary changes that it affects, but before I describe what those changes are and the impact, just let me state that all of these changes, the changes that are in this bill, are precipitated by the Department observing some changes in ongoing business patterns and customs and the evolving nature of how we conduct business as a society, and I think everybody over the last three months will appreciate that more. So the first change is adding a definition, local delivery to the use, to the definitions of the zoning code, and also to the use chart, the prohibited uses chart. We did some research and tried to figure out exactly what we were seeing on the ground and what we had heard from other, I guess, some business practices, what they were trying to accomplish, and what the national standards are reflects what you see on the paper in front of you in the legislation. So local delivery, as we are defining it, will essentially allow for going to home services. So these are the emergency, emerging business practices like Instacart, which is a grocery delivery service, or restaurant delivery service like Uber Eats, as well as a lot of the larger fleet of Amazon Prime trucks and other deliveries, local delivery service that might be occurring. These are not interstate, these are not, you know, long-distance deliveries, these are merely going from a point of sale, such as a store to a home, or a warehouse to a home. And this differs from other commercial vehicles that we have listed in the code. So that's the first, first primary change is adding that definition and that use, to allow that use. Again, we've seen this emerging, and clearly, I think everybody's familiar with what that is now. The second change affects off-street parking, and this is related to the local delivery use. What we see is by placing that use in, in the industrial zones that typically have larger lots and larger parcels, it would allow for some of the warehouses to park on other lots nearby and have their employees be able to move back and forth between a warehouse and a parking lot. That change will obviously affect parking in other districts, but we were very comfortable with that actually being, taking place. Having the code changed from requiring parking, shared parking on an adjacent parcel didn't always work out for some of the applicants, and it actually inhibited some folks from being able to take advantage of that if it was a parcel that they owned but was across the street or somehow otherwise separated. So we were comfortable with making that change by allowing it on a separate parcel that did not have to be entirely adjacent, and then allowing the distance to be expanded, the proximity of the parking from 500 feet to up to 2,000 feet in the industrial zones, simply because in the industrial zones, the distances are greater. That's basically it in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Killian. Council, questions? Wagner?
If I could, I understand exactly what you're trying to accomplish, and that's the proper thing to do. I've been looking at this, trying to figure out what other products could be, could slip into that line thirteen of local deliveries of small items. Small is a relative term, just trying to figure out what else we could do to clean that up and make it something else that we don't get, something that we really don't want. That's just something for you to think about, if we could look at it and just consider that. And then on line two, which would be number three, the shared parking area is located less than 500 feet to the entrance of the primary building, the distance may be, I would suggest that you put up to a maximum of 2,000 feet, rather than it could just be a maybe increase. I think we need to tighten that up just a fuzz, if you could, so that we don't, I mean, maybe doesn't mean much to me, you know what I mean?
Right, I think, yeah, as long as the maximum is up to 2,000 square feet, you know, I don't have a problem with.
If you would, I'm not going to offer up anything, but if you would just take a look at it and see if we could, we could address the both of those a little bit to make it a little bit more specific, I'd appreciate it.
Happy to do that.
Thank you.
If I could just offer on the, on your first, you know, comment regarding the delivery. Perhaps not surprising that the industry and these types of uses can be fairly, very specific, and, you know, becoming too hyper-specific with those, we looked at what it would require and what it might rule out, what we already have in the code, there's a fairly, you know, broad list of categories that other delivery services would fall into, so we were certainly trying to carve out something that would allow for, you know, the types of services and use that I described to fit in without being too restrictive and too, putting too fine a point on it that it would not allow for some additional uses, but we can certainly go back and look at that and see whether or not there is a more descriptive term that we can use.
Right, and to be, I mean, I'm guessing you're looking at more of a small item delivery as more of an Amazon-type delivery service that, you know, small packages that come to your house, and I wouldn't want it to fall into the category of small items could be canisters of propane, you know what I'm saying? Just trying to make sure that we don't, we don't breach over into something that we don't want to get, trying to keep it to something that we are trying to allow for.
That's our goal as well.
I know, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Anyone else? Mr. Janjerdano?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Killian, how does this differ from the existing, I guess, law that's on the books? I was trying to read that to distinguish between, between the two, and I know that UPS trucks and Amazon trucks sometimes will stop on a main thoroughfare, get out and deliver their packages, so is this somehow or another, what's, what's the effective change of this that this implements? What am I missing?
So, so to put this in sort of fairly layman's terms, layperson's terms, the only, if Amazon were to come and want to, or another delivery service, want to establish a lot where their drivers would show up, pick up a truck, go to a warehouse, pick up goods, or go to stores and pick up goods, restaurants pick up goods, and then deliver those to a home, we would be forced to put a use classification, associate that with a use classification, because none exists, we would have to find one, and the closest one we would be able to find would be something like commercial vehicle storage. Most of the vehicles that are being used, we have a definition for what a commercial vehicle is, but most of the vehicles that are used in these situations are not, would not meet that definition, but having no better use, that's where they would fit, and they, therefore, that use would be prohibited from certain areas, and they would then have to go through either a special exception or be limited and restricted to some other district. So, so that's what we were trying to do, is not have it have to be confined to a use that didn't really match what they were providing. So that's, that is basically the, all of this is allowing for a new type of use that is emerging to, to actually not have to be jammed into a use that exists that doesn't quite fit.
Okay, one other, does this also include, or probably doesn't include, but is mobile digital advertising allowed in Hartford County if somebody, is there a, is there a code that, that either allows or does not allow that, if somebody's driving around the county with, you know, mobile digital signs?
No.
So there's nothing at this point that prohibits anybody from doing that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Killian, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Janjerdano. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon, anyone signed up?
No, Mr. President, there is no one signed up.
All right, well, if no one else signed up, this concludes the public hearing on Bill twenty dash zero one one, and the public hearing is now closed. Thank you, Mr. Killian. So, we'll go ahead and roll into our regular council meeting. Chair calls order legislative session day twenty dash zero nineteen. I would ask you to please stand and join me for the pledge, followed by this evening's opening prayer by Councilmember Schroed.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the people of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, and evergreen, with God as our Lord.
Dear Heavenly Father, we gather here this evening as colleagues and friends to continue service to the citizens of Hartford County through your guidance and direction. Over the past months, our county and our country have experienced tragic events that have affected us all, grant us the strength for our communities to move forward through these and other hardships. Please heal the sick, help those who have lost their livelihoods, calm fears caused by the riots, and bring comfort to everyone who has lost or loved one.
Agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations. We have none. Agenda number five, consideration of petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Executive appointment, Historic Preservation Commission may have a motion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Woods.
I move to approve the executive's appointment, like executive's reappointment of Philip McCall and the new appointment of Eric Pope to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Schroed. I move to second to approve the reappointment of Philip McCall and new appointment of Eric Pope. Council, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Mr. Woods.
Hi.
Mr. Janjerdano.
Hi.
Mr. Schroed.
Hi.
Mr. Wagner.
Hi.
Mr. Beola.
Hi.
Seeing seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Agenda item number six, approval of minutes, legislative day twenty dash zero eighteen, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda item number seven, new business, U.S. Board on Geographic Names, United States Geological Survey. Council, you had before your request to approve the naming of a six-tenth mile-long tributary currently unnamed in Hartford County. The proposed name is Cougar Brook, refers to the mascot of Boston Middle School, which is adjacent to the stream, seventh-grade students studied this stream in their science classes. So before us, we have proposal of naming unnamed stream. Councilmembers, if there are no objections, I would like to have general consent to approve sending a recommendation for approving the request of the proposal of the naming of Cougar Brook, Cougar Brook Creek to the U.S. Board of Geographic Names, U.S. Geological Survey on behalf of the council. Thank you, council. Also, before us this evening is our twenty twenty council meeting summer schedule. Council may have general consent to approve the council's summer meeting schedule as follows. Council legislative sessions will continue, our regular legislative sessions through June sixteenth, and recess for July and August. Council legislative sessions will resume on Tuesday, September first, twenty twenty. Do you have general consent? Thank you, council. Next on the agenda, number eight, business from the president. I'm going to sound like a broken record a little bit here, but I want everyone to know that my colleagues and I continue to work with all of our business partners, small and large, along with the Health Department, our Sheriff's Office, we continue to work with our businesses to see that they're open and following proper social distancing guidelines. We're extremely pleased to see that our restaurants have been able to have outdoor seating to get them up and running. I want to thank the county executive and our municipal partners for their legislation and their executive orders that they put forward to benefit our restaurants. We know that they've been struggling throughout this pandemic and that this will help them in a huge way. Also, we ask that our citizens continue to remain vigilant in regards to the COVID-19 pandemic. We also ask everyone to be respectful to one another as our country faces yet another crisis. Jeanne and I are truly saddened by the most recent events surrounding the tragic and unnecessary death of Mr. Floyd. We work and partner with all of our elected officials. We truly support the respectful and peaceful protests and rallies taking place in partnership with our community organizations. With that, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to say tonight, I'm just going to speak a little bit on what's going on in the nation. I'm not here to poke anyone in the eye, not the council, not county executive, no one. I just want to make sure that we all know facts, because we in this, in this county and in this country have had a sort of schizophrenic attitude about race in our nation, and I just want to let everyone know that Hartford County isn't immune to anything that's going on around in the world. I think that, you know, just to speak frankly, that we, we in Hartford County, we're sitting on a ticking time bomb as well, simply because of justice and inequality within the forty corridor. I was talking to my father today, and we were talking about, you know, army things, military, and he was explaining to me that, as a soldier back in their day, that they were a hundred percent of a man while they fought for this country, and when they returned to American soil, they were looked at as two-thirds of a man. I experienced, when I was in the military, I had soldiers that came from all over the place, whether it was Hondors, whether it was, you know, anywhere in the, in the country to get, to have citizenship for this country, and we allowed them to fight and die for us, for, for our, for our freedoms and for our rights to assemble like these, these folks are doing with these protests. But then, after the fighting was over and after we used them, or they sacrificed their lives, then we consider them, or people consider them as others. It's funny how, how, you know, individuals will love a person of color, or love a woman that, that is on their sports team, but when that person isn't scoring a touchdown, isn't making that basket, that person of color, and then they're just a regular citizen, now they, they are considered an other in this country. We need to have a serious discussion, a serious dialogue about race in this country, and it starts, it doesn't start in Washington with this dialogue. In the Army, NCOs are considered the backbone of the Army, meaning that they stand upright, and that's what keeps the structure of everything in the military. We, as local officials, everything starts local. We are considered the of the legislative body, of the legislative system. We need to start having serious dialogues, serious conversations about race, and making this a much better union. We've made strong steps back. We have the ability to have the greatest nation in the world, but it's time for us to really seriously have these serious discussions, whether it's black folks and whether it's white folks, and some people are going to get hurt. Some people's feelings are going to get hurt, simply because we have certain prejudices within ourselves, but those conversations have to happen, and I'm imploring my colleagues to sit down and let's come together and bring folks together and have these serious conversations, have these dialogues, so that we can start it locally. We can change things locally here, and it can spread out throughout the, throughout the state and throughout the nation. So with that, Council President, I'll yield my time back, and I thank you all, and I just, once again, you, you guys have been awesome, you've supported everything thus far, and I just want us to make sure that we are doing the right thing for all, for everyone around the county, so I'll yield my time back.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, and Mr. Johnson. Over the weekend, you had an event, and it's disappointing to find out about it well after the fact, so if anything else like that, I know something coming up soon, but if anything else comes up like that, please let us all know. Thank you for that. Mr. George Floyd, I'll tell you, this, it's been a, it's been an unbelievable week, watching everything, listening, and a lot of listening, and one of the things that, besides the event, besides the murder, the killing of Mr. Floyd, something that bothered me tremendously within the next twenty-four hours or so, when I tried to do a search just to find information and just see what was out there, none of the news agencies said Mr. Floyd's name. It really bothered me, you know, every single comment for the first twenty-four hours or even more, actually it spread in almost until Wednesday, was the same thing, it was an unarmed black man was detained and died in police custody. It took days before any of the media mentioned this man's name, and I, I felt that was a huge, not just mistake, but just, just throwing more salt into the wound, and I, it just, I thought that was terrible. Said a lot, both my wife and I spoke about that to each other, and we're like, you know, it's just, it's a human life that was lost in the media, it doesn't even have decency to say that man's name. And then, on top of that, we have, with the protests in this, in Maryland, I don't know about the rest of you, but for the protests that have taken place in Baltimore, for the exception of a couple small issues, which have already been proven to be outsiders, and especially law enforcement's been coming to our, my wife's shop, and so we were talking about it today, the majority of the people that caused the problems had nothing to do with Maryland or the state or Baltimore. So knowing that, I can't tell you how proud I am of Baltimore for having their protests and, and being as peaceful as they have been, and it's, Baltimore has done a great job with this right now, and seeing the other side of this with the law enforcement, where you see law enforcement officers and and protesters actually like coming together and reaching out, we need a whole lot more of that. You know, just, I guess, right before the legislative session, I met, and I'm drawing a blank. Can't remember. And we were talking about, I'm so sorry, I'm drawing a blank on her name, should've wrote it down. We were talking about what her and her family did.
Keep talking.
Yep. And years ago, they helped the Sheriff's Office come up with plans and really worked with the Sheriff's Office to get the Tange virtual, thank you. And her story and her information was so helpful and so wonderful. We sat, our meeting was supposed to be like 30 minutes. Our meeting went for four hours in my office. I took all of her information, immediately took it right back down to Annapolis and gave it and presented it to Mago. And then I presented it to the Black Caucus and at the same time with Councilmember Craig Rice from Montgomery County. He is actually gonna use her product and use what they've done over the years to help with police relations in that county. So that's actually, it's an initiative started here in Hartford County and had huge support from Sheriff Jesse Bane. And she thanked Jesse Bane and she thanked Sheriff Gaylor so much for listening and being a part of that and making changes. So much that Montgomery County is looking at that project, that program. So you're right, Councilman Johnson, right here in Hartford County, something like that, starting here from Hartford County. And you're right, it's this council and this government's job to make sure that moves forward. And because the media missed it, a couple others, say it again, Mr. George Floyd.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Jan Jorgano?
Thank you, Council President. I have a very good friend of mine who's been in a rehab facility for the past 18 months, getting kidney dialysis three times a week. Paul Green, who grew up in Forest Hill, coached a lot of kids. I just want to wish him the best, that he gets a kidney and he gets out of rehab. I've seen him a couple of times. Thankfully, I was able to see him before the virus started and he's been safe. But just a wonderful person, helped the communities and I just, you know, he's always in my thoughts and prayers. And anybody out there listening, a lot of people, a ton of people know him and just everybody wish him well and keep reaching at him. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Jorgano. Mr. Schroed?
Thank you, Council President. I'm sorry to hear about Bill Green. I will keep him in my thoughts and prayers. Very good friends with Green family. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, same family, I'm sure. Anyway, just want to say, I think in Hartford County, we just, our Choose Civility campaign, I think will go a long way. I know that, you know, from the county executive's office to the library and that partnership, I think now would be an ideal time to amp that up with what's going on now around our country. And I know we're not immune to it in Hartford County, but it feels like we are close knit enough that, you know, it's just like the motto and what our county executive says all the time, be kind to all kind. So we all just need to think simple like that. And I'm hoping that what came out of this latest incident, that we can exponentially amp up our Choose Civility campaign locally. And I think that will help get us in a better place. And who knows, it might wind up being a model for our state and our entire country. It seems like we excelled to the top here in Hartford County. We're lucky to live in such a great place and I hope that we can be an example right here at home, right here in Hartford County. So that's all I have in my, thank you. Everyone be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Schroed. Mr. Wagner?
I guess the untimely death and certainly call it what it is, the murder of George Floyd is on everybody's mind, especially in light of all the riots and the uprisals that we've got going on throughout our country. You know, whenever I heard, whenever I hear the term Black Lives Matter, I guess my brain typically goes to All Lives Matter. And, you know, black, white, yellow, red, I don't care what it is, we're all humans. And unfortunately, in this instance, it appears that they had one human on a police force that wanted to act inhumane. And that got us to where we are today. The riots and the uprisings and the vandalism and the looting and all the things you see happening are not in response to George Floyd's death. They're opportunists, just seeing an opportunity to come out and vandalize and do the things they're doing, using that as, I guess, a pinnacle that this is why we're doing it, which is incorrect. You know, it does no service to George Floyd's life memory or anything else to do what they're doing. And I think that in Hartford County, we're a little bit more unique than some of the other places. Maybe I'm naive in thinking that, but I think that, you know, our sheriff, our sheriff's office and Sheriff Gaylor has done a good job of vetting sheriff's deputies to make sure he doesn't have, as you can best tell, bad eggs in the basket. I think he's got a good group of deputies there and I think that I would bet against that happening here in Hartford County. Having said that, it may come back to bite me, but I think that we've got a good group of deputies here. I think we've got a fine group of state police that are local. And I think that the values are a little bit different among some of the people here in our region. So I would be hard pressed to think that that same thing would happen anywhere close to us in Hartford County. I would hope that it would not, and I would certainly hope that any violence remains somewhere else, if it has to go someplace, but stay out of Hartford County. You know, it was very unfortunate what happened, but at the same time, I think there's some other underlying issues there that have prompted this and are making it more than what it should have been. And, you know, just everybody, keep the other cities, towns, country, I mean, you know, countries too for now. I mean, it's all across the globe, but keep them in your prayers and hope that this is resolved sooner than later. And we'll move on and be a better country after it's all over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Buell?
Thank you, Mr. President. And let me start off by saying that we live in trouble, troubled times at this time. And I support all my council members in their comments. And I would like to thank Councilman Johnson for his comments, as well as Councilman Wagner, Trods, all of you. But on many levels, it is very disturbing to me that the life of an American citizen, George Floyd, was taken at the hands of a police officer who's sworn to protect the rights of citizens. His tragic and unfortunate murder, because I don't, this was not just, you know, some, I looked at some of the media and they said, yeah, no, this was, to me, a brutal, slow, painful murder. This should speak to all of us, and I don't mean just here in Hartford County, but as a nation, as individuals, what we can do, and I mean do, not just provide lip service, but what we can do. Now, we can talk about how blessed we are here in Hartford County. We should look at what we can do to, within our community, to bring about meaningful, lasting, peaceful change in this country so that we can live together in peace and harmony with equal rights and justice for all Americans. Peaceful protest, that's one way to bring about change. I'm all about peaceful protests. But the violence, looting, destruction of property is wrong and must stop. Public safety is the primary purpose of the government. The primary purpose is to protect citizens. These are our communities, our livelihoods, our culture. It's being destroyed. And it will take generations to recover. All we have to do is go around our country and look. As an elected official, I pledge, and I mean this, because this has to stop. It has to stop, or this country will implode on itself. But as an elected official, I pledge, I will work with those groups, individuals, whoever, that has the common goal, that we will do whatever needs to be done to make sure that each and every American, regardless of skin color, regardless of religious background, regardless of whatever, that they have equal rights, equal justice for all. And let's use this moment in time. Let's see if we can't use this to bring about change, peaceful change and justice for George Foreman, I mean, George Floyd, excuse me, and his family. And, you know, thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Buell. Well, thank you all for your comments and for your input. Number 10, comments from attending citizens. I believe we have one signed up.
Malamo?
Good evening, sir. Council President Vincenti, could I have your name and address for the record, please?
Sir, good evening to you and to your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive, Bel Air, Maryland. On 31 July 2019, Mr. Killian, answering a request for determination of the drone test facility, wrote and quoting, "The Department of Planning and Zoning recognized a use described by Service Engineering Company, LLC, 'Developing research and testing of unmanned aerial vehicles, i.e. drones, as a permitted use in 2018, and the tenant has been authorized to occupy a hangar at the Hartford County Airport location.' Further writing, 'That the use is not subject to a request for a written determination. This letter shall not serve as such and it is not subject to appeal pursuant to Section 267, 7A, Part N 6 of the zoning code. That use identified by Mr. Killian is not specifically listed in the permitted use chart. A closely related materially similar use in laboratory research, experimental or testing listed under the industrial use classification. This use is not recognized in the permitted use chart as a permitted use in the Ag District unless it is directly related to agriculture, nor is it recognized as a permitted accessory use in the conclusions and conditions of zoning case 5814 or in the Hartford County Code. Mr. Killian did not provide any factual findings or analysis or next code, just a conclusion.' Quoting now from the memorandum opinion and order in the matter of Austin Transfer and Processing, LLC, Circuit Court for Hartford County, Case Number C 12CV18856. When requested to classify a proposed use, the director of planning must first see if the proposed use is listed within the permitted use chart for the district. If the use is specifically listed, then the inquiry is over. If the use is not listed within the permitted use chart, the director must determine whether the proposed use is materially similar to a classified use in the zoning code. If the director determines that there is a materially similar use in the district, then the assigned classification of the materially similar use in the permitted use chart in the district coverage. If the director determines there is no materially similar use in the district or in the materially similar use is permitted in another district, then the proposed use is prohibited in the subject property's district. Underlying this process is the presumption that the use is not specifically listed or presumed to be prohibited. The larger issue is that Mr. Killian has no authority for this action, whether the airport is a non-conforming use or a permitted use. As a non-conforming use, the drone test facility would be an extension of the non-conforming use. As a permitted use, it would be an accessory use, but not authorized by the code, thus requiring a variance. In either case, the drone test facility would require an action and approval by the zoning board of appeals to operate on Hartford County Airport. The drone test facility was never recognized or approved as an extension of the use or as an accessory use by the Board of Appeals. Mr. Killian assumed authority he does not have in his findings that the drone test facility is a permitted use. On 28 October 2019, Site Plan S 238
Mr. Malamo, please bring your comments to a close.
Sir, I have just one more sentence.
Bring it to a close quickly, sir.
The drone, with the drone test facility was approved. Gentlemen, I'll leave you with this question. Should the same law apply equally in Hartford County or not?
Good night, sir. Okay. So we have three more callers this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. This is Council President Vincenti. May I have your name and address for the record, please?
Mr. President, my name is Commander Mike Bush from Post 37. With me in the room, I also have Vice Commander Johnny Booker and Vice Commander Jason Robertson. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the council this evening. The Joseph L. Davis American Legion Post Number 47 in Habiter Grace has been serving the community for more than 100 years. This service includes assisting with housing, travel, funeral expenses for veterans and military families, aiding with the access to health care and benefits for veterans, encouraging youth sports and activities by sponsoring teams, and providing a facility for youth events and fundraisers and functions. The Legion operates by revenues based on fundraising, food and beverage sales, hall and pavilion rentals, membership dues, general donations, and in our case, funds from a marina wharf. The wharf is quite unique for an American Legion. Ours has not only served to benefit the members, but also a place which to launch water-based veteran and service officer therapy from Heroes on the Water and our new affiliate Liberty Lock. Our wharf is in desperate need of repair and combined with the replacement of the bulkhead and dredging would be about $180,000 project. We applied for grants, have agreed to post and allocate specific funds for the project and are working with Maryland's Living Shoreline Project for Bulkhead Options based on Maryland's grant funding. We asked for $40,000, which would have gone a long way to aid in this project, specifically the dredging. We were informed that our request would be met closer to $25,000, which would have covered the new deckings and pylons. We understand that the county council was not able to assist with this request ahead of the adoption of the FY 21 budget. We're here this evening to ask that you continue to consider our request if funding becomes available.
Well said, Commander. This is Johnny Booker. Again, thank you, County Council, for taking the time to listen to us today. We want to go ahead and thank you for your consideration. We appreciate that. We also want, we also invite you to come down to the American Legion Post 47. I think most of you are familiar with our grounds. And just take a look at the number of veterans that actually come out there. We support Hartford County veterans. It's probably much, it's not more than any other VSO in Hartford County, especially with the 24, 25% demographic being veterans. As one council member mentioned earlier, it is pretty much the lifeblood of the organization. So we do in fact invite you to come see, give you a quick tour of what we would actually do with the $25,000 should we receive it. We definitely put that to good use toward Hartford County and the greater good. Thank you very much, guys. I really appreciate it.
Gentlemen, this is Jason Robertson. I just want to echo-
Gentlemen, this is Jason Robertson. I just want to echo the comments from both Commander Mike Bush and First Vice Johnny Booker. And yeah, we would love to welcome you down here to see what the wharf is all about and look at the project that we're looking at. You know, it, long story short, it has been neglected over some time. And, you know, with this, with how we're looking at the project now, the funding would go a long way in ensuring that the marina is a self-serving operation, a self-servicing operation. So it wouldn't have to draw more funding from the post to sustain it. And in fact, it will become more than just revenue neutral. And in time when we can max out the number of boats that we're able to come in, get closer to reaching our, our full capacity, we'll actually have a good source of revenue for the post and to continue serving our community and our veterans. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration, gentlemen, and I hope you all have a good evening. Also, on a personal note, I really appreciate the comments surrounding the recent events. Thank you.
Councilman Robertson, I want to thank you for your service, not only to the city of Haverty Grace, but to the country. Commander Booker, same to you, sir, as well. Commander Bush, we appreciate your service as well and look forward to visiting you at, at the American Legion. You guys take care and we'll be in touch. Ms. Dixon, anyone else signed up?
There is no one else signed up, Mr. President.
With no one else signed up, then this meeting will be adjourned. Good evening, gentlemen.